...to apply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Bill Rice on this yet? We have agenda before or additions or corrections to the agenda as printed?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as printed, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. We have minutes on eleven twenty-three. Are there directions to that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion, Rick Rick.
Second.
Second by Mark, to approve the agenda from November thirteenth as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Do we have visitors to the audience at this point who want to say anything? If not, we'll move right along to Dean Kruger. Do you have discussions with us?
Yes, what's first on the...
First item on the agenda is discussion on twenty-eighty agreements with cities.
Okay, um, I guess you guys kinda requested that I kinda look into that and get an order or a twenty-eighty agreement written up and stuff, so I presented one to you. Um, County Attorney John Beatty kinda redid it and this is what we've kinda come up with, for the twenty-eighty agreement for the cities.
I have some suggested typographical or miscellings and things.
Oh, okay.
Would like to, um, in section one, the second line says, "And one supervisor, and and."
Oh, okay.
There should be two ands in there. Um, I sent these to John, but evidently he just didn't change. At the bottom on compensation, second line says, "Paid the Humble County," or just "paid Humble County."
Well, I'm glad you were in my ear, Dean.
Me too.
Down at the bottom, the last line, "Made at..." The, we should have a "the" in there, "The Humble County Courthouse."
Bottom, very bottom there, last line.
Last line on page one.
Made at.
Made at "The Humble County Courthouse."
Oh, put the "in" there.
Yeah, it just doesn't sound right how that is. I'm sorry.
At the Humble County.
Gotcha.
On the top of the next page, um, "Street in Full City, Iowa for each of the remaining two years of the agreement." Instead of "of agreement," just "wrong" better.
Where's that at?
Um, the first line on the second page.
Second page.
For each of the remaining two years of the agreement.
Okay.
Um, line three, or number three under section six, um, the third line down, "Dispatched by The Humble County Communications Center." As I said, just a little reminder. And the only other thing was on the last page, the signatures are, um, usually on mine you say "Humble County Auditor," this time it said "Auditor Humboldt County." Um, it switches to say "Humble County Auditor," it says "Humble County Sheriff," at the top, so that's all that is.
Oh, switched around.
Yeah. Those were my suggested changes. You can either accept them or not, it doesn't matter, it's just...
Would you leave Peggy Rice in there since we don't have the other name? For sure we'd have the names of the other ones in there.
Yeah, I'm gonna say it.
It's a question, just delete your name because...
I think I'd take your name off.
Then you gotta come in for years and years and years and cover that.
Once you sign it, if you sign it, her name will be on it, but then I don't have...
Yeah.
But "Humble County Auditor." Yeah, I would do that.
Yeah, but Peggy Rice.
Since the other...
Unless we don't, because we don't have Dean Kruger in front of the county sheriff.
Well, the rest of them would be that way, yeah.
Yeah, those would be easy fixes.
Yeah.
And I could do that on my copy on the computer for next week and just take them all, if the board wants to do that.
Dean, we have plans. If we got, if we adopted, if we, the plan was to take yourself and a supervisor or two supervisors from this area, from Boston, from Boston, so it's why, so it's government.
Hopefully in the next three months we're trying to do, and, because I got a couple call, or one call already from Renwick and, you know, they're wanting to meet with us and...
Yep. Do they get it in their budget?
Yeah, they're just concerned about their budget.
Yeah, I'd like to get these out too, the cities so they can start reviewing and stuff.
Yeah.
Did you ever come up with the rate then?
No, that's what we're gonna talk about. I think we should go through each one of these blanks, make sure we're putting in the word we want. I mean, that wouldn't take long to do, what it pegging, I think we should do that.
Maybe it's town in there?
Well, I mean...
Well, yeah.
Oh, you're gonna do this for each individual, be a separate one of these, is right. It's not a joint one, is it? Never mind. I see what you're, that's why it's open.
Yeah, because the city will...
So each, you're gonna have a separate twenty-eighty agreement with each community. Because some of them might not sign.
We'd have to.
It might not have, okay.
Yeah, we have to.
But in your interest, Gary, the dollars would be the same.
That's the part, that's the part we'll have to fill in.
You know, I talked about this, you mentioned several people down in I-83, because I knew the topic coming up here. And he was suggesting maybe we have it as a topic of discussion down at Des Moines next year. He said, "Why? We already have it." You know, most counties already have it. I thought we're a hundred years behind. So it wasn't the interest in talking about it, they said, "We got it now, it's working."
We just need to get ours updated, it's time.
And it varies all over the place, from fifty dollars, fifty dollars.
Yeah, I'm sure it does.
I found that out too, because I asked a bunch of sheriffs and stuff too, and man, it's all over the board, what they charge per capita, or so much per year or something, so...
Some of them buy it for an hour.
And the nice thing on the per capita in two ways, one is, you know, if it's a flat per capita, a smaller town isn't gonna get hit as hard as a larger town and you're still probably gonna make the same amount of trips to a smaller town as you would any size town, because, you know, you could have ten calls in a little town and maybe two in a big one, you just don't know.
Yep.
But I think it helps.
And we've had two calls. One was from child custody, that's probably Department of Human Services, isn't it?
No, we get involved in that, unfortunately.
So how much?
But you're also patrolling a lot of these communities, right?
Why do we pay more now than what our taxes are already paid for? We're only paying for one.
You in that space, if you wanted to hire a new deputy, you're on a marshal like you used to have. Is that...
You still have that option.
Okay, okay, you say that, but Dakota, Iowa is the one that's saying that, not... Okay, and Dakota, Iowa...
They say you have to have law enforcement.
They say you have to have law enforcement, but they, but they haven't been law enforcement in some of these towns for thirty, forty, fifty years. There hasn't been a marshal in them, or a town cop in them. And evidently the state has been concerned about it, or they'd have done something about it.
I guess each town can take their own risk. But that being said, we're not really in compliance by not having twenty-eighty agreements. We need to have a twenty-eighty agreement.
Yeah, we obviously do that, but I just can't see the charge for it.
Well, I, I think there should be a minimum charge, and that's why I recommended ten dollars early on. Somebody else has a better idea, I think we should go with it.
How many dollars did you get when you said you'd give it areas? It's all over the board. What's the most present?
Um, probably between the twenty and thirty dollars per capita is probably the...
Do they have escalator cost built in there too, with the cost of living or the...
Yeah.
Oh, they do.
Well, some of them, you know, some of them...
So ten would be very cheap, but... Well, we were starting meeting, we were... South City last year, we talked about that call, and, uh, they, they rang from like, I thought thirty-eight was the highest, down to about twenty.
Really?
Yeah.
So then ten's not really...
And we're the only ones that did charge.
Twenty-two counties out there didn't have it.
No.
And I bet all those other ones have twenty-eighty agreements, and that's what we wanna get done, because we're not really in...
Well, how are you gonna, how, what, what are you gonna use for the count?
Census population's twenty-ten.
Last census.
Next one's twenty-twenty.
Because they vary.
Right.
I mean, that'd be the only way.
Yeah, that's the only way you could do it, because...
Well, yeah, that's the only...
They moving in and out of these, all these towns, like...
Change every year.
Yeah, we're gonna, what do we like?
And we're burning the homes and down when they move out a lot of them. Yeah, nobody, nobody else moves into them.
Well, we're just gonna let half a million dollars on equipment and stuff, you know, it's a lot of money.
You know, I hate to see us do it, but in some counties, if they're in power, we finance all the emergency manager too. Many counties assess that back to each town just like this.
They do.
We're paying the whole bill. So we can't continue to pay the whole bill for everybody.
And, and, and the answer when you go to our communities is this, you know, all these years we have not charged the fee when others have, it's been a very workable agreement and very fortunate we haven't had to charge to this point. And I don't think we're charging to make money, I just think we're charging to offset some of our costs. Just adding one new deputy a year ago was over fifty thousand dollars. Somebody has to pay for this, or you have to get your own help, your own coverage. Maybe ten dollars is enough.
Johnson County allows those small towns to say, "Okay, how many hours coverage do you want?" Figure out the cost per hour of a deputy, buy ten hours or twenty hours or thirty hours of what you want. I think that'd be...
That's not gonna work, that's not gonna work with us, because I've, you know, I'm lucky, well, now I, I might have three deputies out at one time, but, you know, sometimes somebody's on vacation and we're down and, so... And if someone's heading up to cover somewhere, go through Renwick and they get called to a accident. Or we're on transport.
So Dean, the ones that have, you know, the twenty dollar range, what, do they have an increase per year, or do they just have a flat rate, or what do you see?
Well, yeah, I believe like, um, like, my hometown, um, they, they increase fifty cents per cap there every year. So this year, I think they pay twenty-four dollars per capita, next year they'll pay twenty-four fifty.
Because a five percent increase per year on ten dollars starting at fifty cents. But we would be letting them in really reasonably, ten dollars in, compared to the...
Okay, we go out to these council meetings, Dean, you take us with you. What are we gonna tell these people? What are they getting they aren't getting now? Nothing. They're just starting to pay the exact same service.
Yes, plus they have an agreement.
Yes.
That meets the state, the state code, which we need, yes.
We probably only have a couple of those out there and they're old and they're not... Yeah, that's the last one was, uh...
Renwick and Dakota City's probably the only ones who really have them with, isn't it?
Well, I think there's...
You buy something else?
Yeah, there was another one, but it was just a generic, you know, for, you know, do this. Yeah. Yep.
Dakota City's now paying about a thousand a year?
A thousand bucks a year, yep.
Okay, if we go ten dollars, the code saves...
That's a thousand for the total?
Yeah.
But they've always done it, because...
Right.
But that does will be higher.
Yeah, theirs will be about nine thousand.
Nine hundred people in the Dakota City.
So in total, maybe this was gonna be about...
I'm sure not.
One of the, well, one of the questions that was asked, of course, is, how much is this rate, you know, what, I mean, what is our rural population, our city populations, would you guess?
About half the town.
About half the town. But since not everybody in the rural would be included in small towns either, right? So I'll bet if there's two thousand...
There won't even be two thousand.
Two thousand.
Well, if you count Dakota City, they'd be ninety-two.
That's twenty-five thousand. They wouldn't even pay for half of a deputy, and we added another deputy just because we were short. So I think you could justify some of it in that way, because we were willing to add that, and we're taking out of rural services to help cover some of these deputies too. I mean, we're spread thin.
Isn't four of them that we're paying out of rural services?
There's some. So what do you guys think for the rate? That's where we'll really add on this, in a percentage increase.
Well, I, I like the five percent for now, because we start, we're starting way low, in my opinion.
Yeah, I would start any lower than that, and maybe it should be fifteen, I don't know, you say twenty, thirty, I guess I haven't done the research on the...
I would say let's stick with ten. Stay at ten for a little start.
Yeah, exactly.
That's where everybody's been telling everybody, and if ten or fifty percent...
Ten dollars goes a lot of percent more, I'm not really gonna... Because I just put a five percent right in there, so you don't have to reveal it every year.
Yeah, I think those, I think these contracts are good for what, two years?
But you could still put a five percent per year.
Yep.
Okay.
We need to specify that would be on the last census, and that happens over ten years, wouldn't the last census?
If we put after, on that third line under section five, it says, "Amount of ten dollars per capita based on two thousand and ten census figures."
That's very good, yeah, you need...
Is that too specific?
That's, that's where the, the mayor is the target.
Well, I think we should put a...
I should send them, because...
Yeah, I think to clarify that, we need to also, it'll be based on the, uh, every ten years census, so they realize it. And I know it's a two thousand and ten, but it'll also be the two thousand and twenty when we get to two thousand and twenty.
But then you'll have an agreement.
We'll have to rewrite that.
They will.
In two thousand and eight.
Oh, it's only two, oh, I'm sorry, I missed the eighteen part.
And I would suggest we take out where it says, "The payments are due July one sixteen," October one, or I mean, July one fifteen, October one fifteen. Since it's a two-year agreement, let's take the years off of it, that's on the front page two.
Question four.
Because then they're gonna say, "Oh, I only have to pay fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, and I'm done."
No, I see what you're saying.
I was just reading through that, maybe you should take the years off of there, and then they'll know every year.
Is quarterly the best way to do this?
I mean, they could pay it in full if they wanted to, but...
You know, a lot of cities...
So it just makes it easier for them, they don't have the money.
That's kinda where we pay the fee for the dumpsters, don't we, they get paid for it?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would, you know, when they get paid for that, they probably get, know that they need to pay it. So you, you wanna take out the months, then?
The years.
Year, year, okay, the years.
Just the year. And then on the top of the second page is where your five percent comes in. Um, "Do you want an amount in the blank before that, Dean? Because it says, um, for each of the remaining two years of the agreement, the amount to be paid for the services rendered will increase based upon blank with a maximum increase of five percent."
I don't understand the blank.
It says rendered will increase based upon, is that, is that where we're supposed to put the two thousand and ten census?
I don't know. Is that what goes there?
Don't even have to have a blank there, do you?
I don't think so. For each of the remaining two years.
Maybe they can make, increase five percent per year. Wouldn't that be cleaner, Dean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, let's read that other part, otherwise, don't count it for you.
Get rid of the, "For services rendered will increase based upon."
Yeah, if I couldn't split it, it would increase if they do on the census.
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, I will, eventually.
But we're starting with every two years, so we can adjust.
Okay, so now that sentence already makes sense, right? "For each of the remaining two years of the agreement, the amount to be paid will increase by five percent per year."
Yeah, sounds better.
Now, before we discuss this, next, next week we'll have this on the agenda practice, is that correct?
Then you'll have all this cleaned up.
Yeah.
Anything else we need to throw in there or talk about?
And then I only, I only told towns we have to go to ten, is it ten?
Ten.
Huh?
Ten?
Yep. Okay, and then, let's clarify, oh, how you gonna do Laverne, as far as popular, what are you gonna do there?
In Gilmore.
In Gilmore.
In Gilmore. I mean, do you go with the people that are in our county, or do you...
Do you cross the line?
Not very often, very once in a while we do.
What, what, what do you do, hold on, you need to go two towns?
Well, last time over in Humble, they charged a call eliminated.
So that's a little different.
Yeah, I think they charge like a hundred dollars per call. Laverne, I'm not sure, because Sioux County does theirs.
Now, it would seem, since we're charging it per capita, per person, per city, in our county, we should probably go...
Stick to our county.
Our county. I would think to avoid complications, it would probably, you know, one might be more than half, one might be less. I think, you know, Gilmore's probably pretty split, Laverne will probably be a little, wouldn't be that many.
No, I don't think on our side we got that many.
Is there a way to find how that split would work?
Address this.
Yeah, maybe you can bring that back with us next Monday, and we can make sure that's what we wanna do. Does that sound good, Carl? I think that'd be the fairest.
Yeah.
Really, you wanna do something similar, they can't.
Right.
Otherwise you're gonna be double dipping and...
Yep.
Well, and we're stating right in there, that's how we're doing it with the rest of them, I think it'd be a little confusing for them.
When you said a hundred dollars a call, is that through what? I mean, the sheriff's department builds the person that they go with, they go with the city.
Yep.
Yep.
Dean, would you like me to make up like a couple of, um, when I get this cleaned up, I'll send you a master copy, you'll have it.
Sure.
And then I can function a couple cities, use the census figures and just give you an idea of what numbers are being...
Yep, that'd be great.
Okay, I can do that for you.
Yep, that'd be great.
Other discussion, Dean, on this final this morning?
Uh, would you go ahead then and try and maybe make some contacts with these cities, so we could start doing that? Because, you know, the sooner I can get a, a, a plan how you're gonna do that, we can sign up who, what towns we can go to. If we have conflicts, you know, that's gonna be, and most of these council meetings probably be like Monday or Tuesday nights.
Next Monday or Tuesday, the first week.
Yeah, that's the other problem. See, we aren't gonna be able to hit them all.
Yep, well, they may have special meetings too, where they...
Right.
You know, call us in and...
Could you send your deputy out with a couple of us too, really?
Yeah, maybe.
Kill two of them as soon.
We can try and ask.
Do they want that primary word?
The sooner the better, but yeah, if you can kinda make some contacts and maybe start bringing, so you know what kind of meetings are. Maybe there's a chance we could do two on the out, never know.
But, you know, I'm sure if they wanna talk to us, I'm sure that I'll schedule a special meeting.
You know what, that's right, too. Tell them we would be willing to do that.
Yep. Yep.
Just gets, so we can get started.
Yes.
Yeah, so they know it's coming.
That's what I wanna do, if you can clean it up, I'll send it to the towns and they can start looking at it and...
And maybe they don't want us to come. We could say, "If you want us to come, we will."
No, I'm sure they don't want us to come.
Yeah.
When you send it, will you have the number for the two thousand and ten on it, so that they, that number's already in their head?
Yep.
So they can get their rocks ready. Probably pulling a light, yeah.
I think they, towns all know their expenses.
Yeah.
Yeah, they probably do.
Pretty, even if you just, even if you just leave the blanks, and then just give me the towns and just put their numbers, and I can send it all to them, or... And that way they can figure it out.
You know, and not only that, maybe you could send that, the number of each town, you know, like if you send it to Renwick, you could send all ten of the towns, so they see that everybody. And you just, I think just the more information, the better, and they're making it official, we see what's going on, okay.
So what do you need the motions, after it's cleaned, or?
I don't think we need...
They go away. They go away from that.
We have, we'll have a final discussion next week on that. Anything else?
No, you're not getting any action on it, no.
Okay, now with that discussion, move on to next, I mean, we have ATB.
ATB ordinance and stuff. I handed you guys those two ordinances that I came across, and I also printed out the, uh, state law that says, basically it's up to you guys if you wanna allow this to happen or not, so...
Right now, they can be used for animal hunting, for hunting. Some of them can do that, spraying weeds, going to check the pasture, checking the fields.
Pretty much. They go from field to field and, and they're also allowed to go into town to get gas, or they can stop at a restaurant and have a meal as long as, as long as they're not drinking alcohol.
And a fourteen-year-old can do it, going to go and cook from the field, when you have that driver's license.
I think that's correct, yes.
Are any of these, um, have license on them to drive, no?
They have to be registered with the DNR.
But they don't get a license plate on them?
No. Western County, excuse me, when they go to the, the treasurer's office and get, they make up little license plates to put on the back of them. I'm not doing that. That seems like a lot of hassle for, for our gals to do that, so... As long as they're registered with the DNR, that's, that's one of the requirements. So do they have a sticker, like a snowmobile or a boat or?
Oh, they do, yeah.
Yeah, they use it, I don't know if they change them, but...
You could have records on them.
Yeah.
What if I live in Western County and I hold my vehicle in the Humble County, I'm gonna ride over the hills?
As long as you're an Iowa resident, and you got registered with the DNR, you got the registration, and you got insurance on it. You don't have to be a resident, as long as the vehicle is registered.
Yeah, yeah. Do you think most of these are registered? I mean, you, you, are they registered now?
There's quite a few that go down the county, so then they have to get their plate from that county. You know, we had one last week, who said he's got four different plates on the back, and he says, "Jesus, Humble County gonna do this? I'm gonna have to find a spot for another plate in most of the different counties."
Right.
Why, and they, if you're in that county, yeah. So, so we get asked that quite often, what's Hum, what's Humble gonna do?
So we wouldn't have to do that if it was registered?
You know, I know right now, most houses be Western County, Wright County doesn't do it, Casoot County doesn't do it.
They would do it same way we would do it, for them to have it.
If we go into Western County and ride, do we have to have a plate on our Humble County vehicle?
For their county, if you're riding in their park, yeah.
No, just secondary roads. If you're in the... You have to do a T permit. This will only cover secondary roads, period.
Yep, just secondary roads. So Dean, if, um, if we had this ordinance, wouldn't it be better for you in the fact that they, they would have, they would get registered if they were gonna run? They'd need to be registered, right? And they'd have to have proof of insurance too, probably?
Yep.
Wouldn't, because if you're, are you seeing them without license a lot of times when you're, or do most of them have them?
I would say most of them probably have them, they're out there, unless they're farmers, or they're going from field to field.
Because really a lot of them would register anyway, just for, um, theft, for ownership, title and all that, is, I mean, that would be the smart thing to do.
Yeah.
And what is that speed proof?
Seventeen.
Per year? You get one year at a time, or can't, just one year at a time? Oh, they're only one year, okay.
Do you need vehicles that have turn signals and?
No.
Nothing?
No. Just lights.
I think it said a mirror in here.
No, 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 no. It's one of them, that's the other one. Those, those, they don't even like snow, they don't have the chance to have the flag on them, are they?
No. This one don't say anything about, does it say anything about speed? This one did, the other, the other one did. Maybe too many.
The DNR's coming out with a draft, that I was supposed to get this morning, I haven't seen it. Mr. Downing was gonna send it, eager to send it because he said, "Make the correct references in the code." Some counties have not, they're unenforceable.
Now, if I ride my golf cart on the highway, which I have a license to do, I back up lights, the whole bit. And that's legal, I think my golf cart down right on my speed road. I think that includes a year. Says it's ours.
You can't drive it down here.
I just, this is a Wright County one.
Forty-five, forty-two, no.
Oh, okay. Is this the Casoot County one?
That's the Casoot one.
If this is the, yeah.
That's a Wright County one, yeah.
All right.
And the Western County one is way further east, yeah, okay.
Are there any counties in Iowa that do not have these, you know?
Oh, there's probably a few that don't have, but we got Webster, Wright, Casoot, Calhoun, I think Carol is past theirs. So we're, and remember two years ago, we had a gentleman that lived south of Thor, came in and said that he lives in Western County and, and we had ordinance, and that's when we were kinda waiting for the state to see what they were gonna do, and they haven't done anything, so...
How does this affect you, Paul? Any comments?
Well, number one, it just adds more vehicles on the road. That's, obviously, uh, you want to minimize the size. Uh, this doesn't say anything about riding in the ditch, so the, the big fear since some of the counties is tearing up the ditch, this doesn't allow you to ride in the ditch. This rides on the road. Hopefully, the one he's looking at tells you to ride in your whole lane and use the lane, not on the shoulder. The shoulder isn't the place to be riding anyway. The reality is, are we have a lot of them, the fear are that we add more people on the road. Look at the response we had in Eastern Iowa when four kids were on an SUV, a drunk hits them at an intersection, at an uncontrolled intersection, and now they wanna sign every intersection in the state of Iowa, not get to the source, they wanna put signs on every intersection, so... That's why you don't have anything on the state level, there's too much clutter to get anything through there.
As far as riding and riding, right, well, isn't the tractor supposed to stay in the main highway too? Isn't it really illegal to get over on, on the side, food comes to show, I mean, you do it pretty immediately.
It's illegal, it's, uh, uh, like my driver said, instructor said, when I was pulling over to turn, "Don't do that again." That pulling in the left lane to let the guy go by you as you pulled in, eh, yep, Mr. Rock did not like that. And you're never gonna stop the kids that are riding in the ditches, so you blow it.
No.
I mean, that's, they've been doing it for years, hundreds.
Wonder how much that would really increase, Paul? If people have those out there now, they probably can use the excuse, "I'm going to the field, I'm checking corn, I'm checking couple birds."
Some.
There's not been any much increase, I would think.
No, I don't think it will either.
I don't either. At long, uh, we had fears a few years ago, I haven't heard anything more, Kellin County and over there with their Level B roads, where that riding club's come in, and occupy the Level B road.
Well, I could talk to you about a main, secondary road right now, that a man goes out there and eats Spids' Donuts all day long when he gets off work. I mean, you drive that road, you're thinking going over railroad tracks, well, how you gonna stop that? I never seen him do it, but I know damn well what's doing it. I mean, it's rougher than a cob, but it's just the way it is. You're gonna have certain ones that are gonna always do that, but...
You have the discussions with the parents on local, yes. Because he, anyway, they want us to blame this road on a dating basis, uh, uh, or do you wanna drive through this road, just like driving over railroad tracks? And usually the parents put a kibosh to that, usually, if there's parents involved. And usually the parents put a kibosh to that, usually, if there's parents involved.
Yeah.
How many units do we have in Humble County over there?
If they're not registered, she wouldn't.
She wouldn't.
You, you're the ever that, you know how many people are down there?
I got every farmer now.
I guess what I, I would think if you had an ordinance, there'd be a positive side to this. To me, you're not able to, more people would have, well, so. Or then you, and then if they're stolen or lost, you have a little better chance of that, which should help your job a little bit on that side. It'd be nice if they didn't.
And the same.
Go to the seller if they registered.
That's what I wanted to, yes, to find a transfer title.
Yeah, that's.
And I think that's probably true.
That's, that's down the biggest, how much time is spent in the state trying to track them down?
That's a good point too, so that should help.
ATB votes and it's nice if they're registered.
I said, well, then they oughta pay us. So wouldn't it be?
Then then.
If you have four different counties with four different plates, isn't that kind of?
That's what I don't understand.
That's what I don't understand, right?
The state can do something.
If they want them registered, it would be easiest to just put one plate on.
So are they registering all those counties? Exactly. Registration or they're afraid they're not covered in state, I suppose, if you, if you took it out of county, would you have to have enough license? You went to Wright County or you went to Cassouche? I don't understand why they're doing that.
As long as it's, it's registered with the, with the, uh, DNR.
One time.
And not Webster.
Yeah.
I mean, if, as long as you got it registered with the DNR in Iowa and you got the registration and you got the insurance and you're.
It should be legal. You show that you can, that you own it. And then I say, I assume the same, uh, laws for carrying guns in cases would apply to any other vehicles. A lot of these are gonna have guns on them, rifles, I'm sure.
Yeah.
But they have to be in a case tied down or something.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Nice to watch you apply it often.
Well, I'm sure there's, that they're being used for that.
This, this thing does have a good definition for roadway, as in shoulder to shoulder, does it or does it not?
Yes.
Good, because this does not permit you to ride in the road ditches or off, or traveled portion of the road.
And, and Paul's got a good point there, because when you look at section two and number two, the first thing you're describing is an off-road utility vehicle. So the first thing that comes to mind, well, then you can drive these off-road, but that's not really what you're saying. It's, it's called an off-road utility.
Yeah, is to travel.
It's just a term.
Roads within the roadway.
And then you're right, number three roadway means a portion of the county approved, designated for ordinary use.
Well, you better clean that up. What's ordinary use of a road ditch?
Well, it's vehicular travel.
There you go. I like that.
How many of you farmers, how many of you farmers, um, gravel roads spray your, along the cornfield?
Uh, that would be permitted no matter what happens today here.
Well, they'll use the road ditch, I'll guarantee it.
No, that's permitted no matter what this ordinance says, cause that's covered in the statute of law.
There is allowing them to use the gravel roads to drive on.
And Dean, why are you allowing them to use the gravel roads without license? Have you enforced that? Or no, they've done what they're supposed to do if they open a license?
Well, if we stop them, they've gotta have their registration from the DNR.
And the sticker.
And the sticker, yeah.
And the sticker blows off about with the third power wash.
Well, yeah, this doesn't stay right. But the big thing is they pay at the registry, so they get their registration.
And form of insurance.
Yeah.
And if they're not sixteen, they have to take, they have to take, you can't be fourteen just driving a car, you have to take. No, you have to take.
With the sticker.
You have to take that.
You're supposed to promote too, but they've never seen anybody out in the rivers, checking this, young kids that are grabbing a boat. Yeah, like in Western County, whatever, whatever numbers and letters you get on your sticker for your, for your DNR, that's what they put on those little plastic plates you're supposed to put on the back there. But I didn't know if you wanted to mess with those or not. They, they charge an extra ten dollars to get those little plates.
And they're supposed to be lit according to the draft stuff in the state, and some people adopted that, which is.
Yeah. It just gets.
Western County's the one that has, they have to get the little license plate on the back there.
That's for the DNR sticker or the regular license plate?
That's what the, the treasurer's office makes up for.
Uh, but then that money goes to Western County. Western County, the money in a humble goes, what, fifty cents, you said it?
No.
No, the little plastic plate would be all.
Right, that's all Webster, but when you register here in Humble County, where's the money go?
I don't know.
Probably in the DNR.
A dollar twenty-five that the county gets and the state gets the majority of everything.
There we go.
So those little plates on this, that's just.
We get a fee to process.
No, you don't have it, that's it. You don't actually have a license plate.
You ain't got your.
Like these all-terrain vehicles. You'd think cause it's on the road, you'd have a license plate, but you don't, they go over there.
Can I ask a question? I'm a farmer. I've been using my, two years, I go out and raise chickens.
No, it'd be nice if it was true, in case it ever gets stolen.
That's what I'm getting at. If they's were older, for steel, for, uh, dedication, it probably would have some.
Yeah.
Yep.
But you're not, I'm gonna get mine registered.
By the end of the month.
By the end of the month.
Ends up being nineteen ninety-five a piece or something by the time you're done, right?
Other input before we come to this next week?
We're up to Peggy, I think.
Peggy?
But we don't, we're not asking for.
Hi, Dean, get your pen out. Get a red, get a red pen out.
You're not asking for.
No, 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 no. So we're gonna sign this ordinance number sixty-three.
Okay.
Um, and the definitions, number one defines an all-terrain vehicle as a motorized flotation vehicle. Number two says off-road utility vehicle means a motorized flotation tire. Do we want a flotation tire or just flotation vehicle?
Flotation tire, tires, tired vehicle if you wanted tires on there. What do you want there, Dean?
Uh, number one, all-terrain vehicle says means a motorized flotation vehicle. Number two, off-road utility says a motorized flotation tire vehicle. So should it be just flotation or flotation tire?
I would think it should say flotation tire.
Should have above probably then too.
Yep.
And the number for this ordinance, Dean, will be sixty-three, that's our next one. Um, on page two, on, on letter S, it says, on any public land, ice or snow in violation of official signs of the commission. Do we need to define who's the commission? And then on the third line, again, we refer to commission. Any officer appointed by the commission may post official signs. What commission are we talking about, people are gonna ask?
It's just the one you're, I'm, Y E, for instance, if this is roadway, in the roadway, we don't have any nursery or planting, so why do we even have it listed? It just confuses people as to where they can ride.
Yeah.
Why does it tell you you can't ride in the stream? We don't have very many streams that are suitable for vehicle, vehicle and traffic.
Okay, cause the, the code under three twenty-one I.
Says something.
Is pertaining to, um, all-terrain, and it's listed in there, all these, uh, places you're unlawful operation. So I'm sure they probably just adopted that and just put it into.
That's my point, it's already adopted.
Yes.
This only tells you, that already is in existence. We cannot write down and destroy railroad right-of-way navigable streams, which is Humble County's two rivers, the east and west. It's already in the code, so why do we confuse people by putting what they can or can't do in this? Tell them they can ride in the road, period. The rest of it's covered by the law.
Well, sometimes people need to remind you, you can't.
But then when the law changes, then this doesn't. We already have that with instructions in right-of-way on the secondary roads, uh, where we need to change our ordinance to match the law.
That's up to you guys, if you want it in or not.
It just adds confusion is the point.
Yeah, cause in the, in the state law, it's got commission too as well as.
Says commission?
Yep.
Like who's the commission? Are they referring DNR? Are they talking conservation?
Commission for DNR.
I would, I would, yes.
Do you want that defined or do you wanna address Paul's concerns about even?
Handicappers, some of them, I can, oh.
Supposedly DNR's draft is supposed to be where you can ride, uh, what you have to do and what qualifications, no more, no less. The rest is supposed to refer to state, uh, state, state law.
And I got from Mr. Gary, I can drive anything, you don't think I'm a, a, a.
I think that's what you're permitting.
It's probably just a reminder, but maybe not necessary to put it in there.
This is for people south of.
I mean, I'm a person who's not in violation of official signs, so commission for.
Now, can you ride in the small towns, the other thing that I.
If they, if they allow you.
Right, the towns have to deal with the towns.
Up to the towns.
You can have your own secondary roads in the towns.
Yeah, cause that's right, in the law too, but, uh.
Right, right in the law, but.
Yeah, it says that, you know, the board of supervisors will do the county and then cities may designate streets under jurisdiction, dixons.
Which a lot of them do.
Yeah.
You could be golf carts for oral.
Yeah, a lot of them do.
Well, we can either define it and say DNR commission in front of commission, or you can.
Yeah, cause they got the, they got the laws for, I mean, for public land, so. We have to say that being under the DNR then.
Right, but that, not under your, it's not under our jurisdiction, like we have it in the.
We start pulling this out, you can pull about three more of these out. I mean, then all of a sudden, we got nothing on this thing.
Well, then you have what you want, what it takes to ride an ATV or SUV in Humble County secondary roadway, period.
But I'm like Carl, some of these stuff, it isn't, it isn't bad for this to be a reminder.
They're riding down the road in the way to the park, what they can do at the park, but they may have them. I see what you're talking about, both sides of the whole description.
Mm-hmm. But it's some, yeah, like Kent was just saying, somebody would come when they copy the ordinance, we know these rules, I'm lawful operating, if you're here, and then I know that they couldn't do that stuff, so.
On Paul's side, if we, if a city didn't, if Rennick doesn't adopt the fact that you're riding in town, we don't tell them that, and the same thing would be true of the.
That's right, yeah.
But if we don't have any trees growing in the road ditch, that mean it's okay to ride in the ditch, yeah?
I don't think that's what it's, yeah, you got, the travel part of the road.
That's my point.
Yeah, I know.
We're splitting hairs.
Just put DNR commission in there, that's my recommendation.
Then we go down to number four, and it says, a person shall not operate an all-utility vehicle on a designated riding area or designated trail unless the riding area trail is signed by the department. Again, are we referring to DNR or are we talking conservation? Are we talking secondary roads? Who is the department?
This was stolen clearly from the state's writing. They're keep referring to DNR and the department and the commission. This is up to you guys. This would be up to board of supervisors as for.
Okay, so what do you want in there?
Can we ride on Three Rivers Trail is the question right there.
Could be our conservation board too.
You put DNR in conservation board or?
Put them both.
DNR's might be conservation. Might be a.
DNR and Humble County's conservation.
Select DNR, there might be some that's.
And then if you go over to page three, again, we refer to the department. A person shall not operate a vehicle other than an all-terrain vehicle on a designated riding trail unless the riding area trail is signed by this department. Do you want the same order?
I'd say so.
There's the other. Yeah, the Humble County's conservation. And then on number six, do we wanna put a person shall not operate or leave it as it is?
Oh, yeah, should have not in there, man. Person shall not operate unless, unless the operator hasn't had a driver's license.
Yeah.
You have to not.
Unless he's fourteen and has his proven, proven test then. This doesn't allow for that at that point.
Cause the law doesn't allow them to drive a pickup bike from the field that they're, that they're too, to be, do that.
You don't, the point is, if others do, I'm asking you, do you wanna allow fourteen-year-old to tap the training for an ATV to be riding down the roadway?
No, I don't think so.
Some do, I'm just saying.
No, I don't want, no, I don't, I agree. I think they're gonna drive a little bit if he's sixteen or has a valid driver's license.
I do too.
Yeah.
Okay.
We gotta clean up what we wanna do on this ATV policy we're gonna have next week.
We're, we're gonna talk to him, uh, I'm gonna talk to him.
Pretty serious business.
We gotta clean that, thank you, Dean. This thing hasn't been taken last week, we're adopting that today.
No, it's all right, but I wouldn't have no cake to be in last week, yeah.
Anything else on your day, Dean?
No, that's, that's all I got, just, everybody be careful on the road today, so. I think so.
Don't fall, hey, don't fall down again today.
They got plenty of salt, though.
I don't know, I was in, I was in, um.
You saw it?
So, you know, that.
No.
Okay.
No, you stole, well, you're using salt, though.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Paul?
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning, Paul.
Uh, we had a letting the other day and I'm here to award or recommend the award of Box Culver Project number LC eighteen twenty-five oh nine located on Roosevelt near Two Seventieth Street to Rognus Brothers Excavating. I don't even remember how many bidders we had. One, two, three, four, five, six bidders. Six bidders ranging from one forty-one, four sixty-two to one hundred and sixty-nine thousand. But, uh, the bottom five were within ten percent and, uh, and that's, uh, that's good for us.
Very good.
Um, two, two, uh, with Rognus at one forty-one and Whiteman at one forty-four, Midwest at one fifty-one. We're all right down there in the ballpark, uh, at this point.
Rognus done work for us before?
Um, all of the bidders on here have done work for us. Rognus did several, three. A year ago, Whiteman's done numerous, Midwest used to be doing most of them. Progressive Structures and Riley just did the two that were Chantlin and C twenty-six and PCI is Peterson has done a lot of them. We have nobody new on the slate at all.
Was nice to see several up here too that day.
So I couldn't make it that day outside of town. Did you have anybody?
Oh, we covered.
Everybody show?
You.
I have a meeting.
We covered you guys.
I called to see if they needed me, but thank God they didn't, because they were.
We were good.
And it was significantly under what we'd.
Estimated.
Estimated, that's a good.
And our estimates again are, the contractors set the pace.
Right.
And, uh, we, we adjusted, uh, a year ago, we went up significantly, uh, and we were up in that range and, and, uh, it's a, it's a. We're, we're fortunate that, uh, to be in the park because if we can get.
Well, I think when you get these ones out early and they're lining up for next year, so many, you know, if you're the number two or three guy and you miss this, you gotta find some work, so. You tend to get some pretty good bids, get some work lined up and as you go along, you don't have to be as aggressive if you got your workers covered, but.
The good news is we have Rognus and Whiteman.
And they're good, they're good to cover.
And, and if either one of them for one reason had to go higher, then we'd be automatically in the one fifties, sure, and, and that's what happens, so. At first, uh, when we read it, somebody was sweating back there thinking they were leaving ten or fifteen thousand on the table, and then all of a sudden, they didn't get the bid, yeah. And it was close.
Do we have a motion to approve the contract?
I'll move.
Motion by Bruce.
One second.
By Rick. A little favor, CI?
Aye.
Move name, motion carried. Next item, quote for secondary road design software.
This is our annual fee for AutoCAD. Um, AutoCAD is, uh, it's a pay me now or pay me later. You either take doses every year or you can write it out as long as you think you can go without an update and then you'll end up paying for all the updates you missed in one month, so. And then a little bit more.
Yeah, there's no advantage.
Usually a thousand bucks every year, yeah. I'd make a motion to approve the quote for this software design.
Motion for carry.
Carry.
And what, software, road design quote? Although they're saying I.
All right.
And to further. And to further add to this, is most everything is trying to get to electronic submissions, and this is one of the formats accepted by DNR. I mean, uh, yeah, we're, we're locked in until, uh, there's something, uh, different, if at all comes out. Otherwise, uh, no news is good news, uh. Uh, we had ice in the north end, more north than south, the roads got remarkably better as I got closer to Humboldt.
Paul, I know one time you brought to us a cost of putting electronic surveillance or some kind of things in each vehicle on the county roads.
Oh, GPS location, oh, a locator, uh...
I talked to some of the engineers down in Des Moines last week, and they thought it was best, they invented since hot butter, because they had a lot of the efficiency picked up. What was the cost, something like eight thousand dollars a year?
Well, we were, I think, the most recent quote was what, twenty-nine ninety-five a vehicle, thirty bucks.
Per year?
Thirty bucks.
No, per month.
Per month.
And, and then that equates back to the, uh, twenty vehicles, six hundred, seven hundred a month, times twelve.
There's your...
Eighty-five hundred, nine thousand, ten.
Do we have that, lots of faces you picked up, or gold bricks?
Well, there's, it's, uh, it's one of the features that, uh, the big features is to know where your people are at, and, uh, in the response of if somebody's having trouble out there, know who's closest to them. Uh, we can do a lot of that same stuff with, uh, self-conversation on our radio. Uh, what office managers like this a lot for is the person that calls in, why are you going to pile my road, I haven't seen the pot for four days? And then they can click on it and say, well, ma'am, it went by bing, 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 and bing.
That was, was coming to one of them, especially in the summertime, when they complained their road wasn't been...
Too low.
And they say, well, he went by at three and a half miles an hour, and it was done at ten-ten Tuesday morning.
No, there's a lot of benefits, uh, if calls...
You get that many calls for people on the phone in a hurry when you can recite right back? Do you get that many calls? People complaining about when the road was graded or snow being, when the snowplow went through? And that kind of relates to this whole...
Many, and, uh, yeah.
Many people have your problem.
It's, it's somewhat...
I'd say people over here...
And then it's, uh, once we get into, uh, which we've been blessed, we have not had the knock-down, drag-out, day after day, wind blows one way.
Right.
You know, so, for the most part, uh, we get a lot of them with the storm, and then they fall off, uh, then, uh, yeah.
Then the next question is, even if you answered that question, would that even satisfy them? That, well, it was blown today, or the day before, you know, because they went real... A lot of times it's happening, they probably had it opened up in the morning, when they came back, and they didn't think they went out there well.
Right.
They went back in.
The answer is, they, we have some substance behind it, the answer, in many cases, they think we're full of BS, that we never went by, you're crazy, I was watching all day.
But I'm saying, even if you told them you did on a certain time of day, I think, they'd say, well, even again, that's the response you're getting.
The other thing, liability issues, um, whether somebody's car got a rock chip in it, you know, how many windshield's we buy a year?
We do.
We buy windshield's, where rock chips get in car.
I want to come out with a charge rock chip.
And then... And the key is, is we, we want to know time and place, and many times, we can prove, and it goes away, that we weren't there. But this is another tool in the closet to prove when and where you were at, uh, liability issues with, uh, driving habits. You can keep track of how fast Bruce is going down the road, and whether or not he stops completely. That's all safety, that would be all safety and liability.
You probably ought to put one in Paul's head, too, then, Jim.
I would start there.
Yeah, this morning, there would have been a nice one.
That's a good point, Carl.
And they go... No, there's a place for them, and we've talked about them at budget time for the last three years, so.
That would drive our budget discussions down, just...
Yeah. They, uh, one county engineer's, uh, found out that they can keep a truck spread a little bit, oil and rock, instead of when, break time, when all seven trucks end up there in the first, you know.
Okay, anything else, Paul? Try and hear about two of them.
I know we're looking like we're back in the winter again this afternoon at some point, uh, hopefully the roads are frozen this time when we get it. Uh, last times was, uh...
Where do I?
Near disaster, with everything as soft as it was, even for my own personal yard. I fixed some of it yesterday, uh, tried to, uh, but, uh, we're nearly in full force, we have a position open and a truck down, so, uh, but, uh...
Where's the truck at? Where's the truck down at?
Truck number forty is gone, and we...
Go on, that's good.
We bought a new one, we had a truck down this morning that's been repaired, that's we're going to get, but... But, uh, Mr. Elephroits' position that we announced last week, uh, is still open for a week.
And we're still on for two this afternoon, right?
Uh, as far as I know, they're still on.
Okay. Did you get any snow, fence put up last week?
I doubt it. I don't think so.
Prove that.
We couldn't, uh, you know, we had a chance, if it wouldn't snow now and it freeze somewhat, we could get fence out, but underneath the snow, you couldn't...
No, it's gonna be a mess. If it gets snowed even today, it'll be a mess out there all winter.
And then there's a large debate on whether or not, we have the debate every year as to whether or not we ought to put it out, period. In some cases, it's, uh, more, uh, a lot of, a lot of counties have gone out of the snow business.
Right.
What'd you tell me about, you went to four o'clock this morning, what'd you see Western County doing?
Four o'clock this morning, they were outside.
The whole road, you had to stop there?
I don't know, they had a big truck, and when I'd pass them, they would be in the other lane, I don't know if they were going down the center or what they were doing.
So, was it freezing down there, or was it just, oh, yeah, we like you there, just like here?
I drove thirty, thirty-five mile an hour all the way.
Because, uh, yeah, most of the heavier stuff came later on than after four o'clock, so you, you run the risk of warship.
It off if it comes too fast. Could get raining, yeah.
Anything else, Paul?
No news is good news.
Gary, how do you do this?
All right. As I told Carl last week, I had, I'm going to have a fun report today. Uh, I was at CSS meeting, Cresco, on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, at ten o'clock. That was to meet with the consumers, and then we had an afternoon meeting, our regular meeting, the afternoon, kind of went over some of the stuff that we didn't cover with the consumers in the morning. A month ago, they had, had on the agenda to adopt a policy for justice involved services three oh two, which would be jail diversion crisis intervention and civil commitment pre-screening. And most of us felt we weren't ready to adopt this in a policy form, because not every county's going to be able to get involved, or not every county wanted to get involved as far as, um, the sheriff's department and VHS and supervisors as far as working through this. So, we sat down, I, we went back, and we were supposed to go back and meet with the sheriff and Kathy Erickson, I met with her. And we went through this for about two hours here, a week after that last meeting, and Kathy went through and graciously wrote up our response to everything that we had concerns with. So, I presented that to every member on that board, and they were very impressed with that. Couple other ones had done the same thing, and had, had noticed some of the same concerns that we had. And so, what they're going to come back with this next week, for next month, is, because we're going to bring that back too, is a resolution, I believe it's a resolution. I can find it. Instead of having a statement as a policy, it's just going to be a resolution for, that we agree to try to adopt these procedures and policies for, um, jail diversion. So, I've got a copy of that, and I'll probably give Peggy a copy, because she's good at refining it, and I'll probably show it to Kathy. So, that was a good step, and I want to thank Kathy for taking the time to do that, because it, it was information that was shared with everybody else, that turned out to be really good information for things that needed to be addressed. So, then in the afternoon, we had our regular meeting, and at this point, we were planning on using the thirty-seven eighteen per capita levy. And for, like, Humboldt County, that, we have, we're going off of twenty thirteen population, nine thousand six hundred eighty-eight, we, we would have to generate, um, three hundred sixty thousand and two hundred dollars, three sixty-two hundred, under the thirty-seven eighteen. So, I've got this listed for all twenty-two counties, there's two counties, Butler, had, there's established when we all became a group at twenty-six oh two, so they don't have to raise theirs. And, I mean, they, they can't lower it, but they don't have to raise it, so they're one county that's below that, and Tinley County is at thirty-two, thirty-six. All other counties, I'm happy to report, are now at thirty-seven eighteen. So, with our group, we've been able to stay alive, we've been able to reach the goal, maintain an operation at thirty-seven eighteen. So, that's the good thing, and I told Carl this, I think, my mind, I look at this as kind of we do our health insurance. We have twenty-two counties, so we have a lot, a broad-based range of different scenarios in different counties. Some of them, yeah, are going to have more problems, more, more, you know, health issues, and some of them are going to be a lot less than the average. But it seems to me that by averaging these twenty-two together in the region we're in, we are in a good region. I mean, right or wrong, we've been able to have a good budget the last few years. Okay, so that being said, we expect to draw down twenty million next year for our region, which would be about a three million dollar shortfall from the seventeen million that we're collecting. And part of that is, there'll be no state reimbursements for the offsets, which we're almost there now anyway, so we're not, you know, we, we wouldn't expect to get much offset now. And then the Medicaid adjustments were all done, and we've been paid for things that were kind of outstanding over the last eighteen months. We're finally caught up, and I think we're zeroed out, so we won't get any additional money there. But the good thing is, about three years ago, when, when I first got on this board, I made a motion that we should, we should try to maintain a thirty-five percent, um, I call it working capital reserve. So, you know, we, you know, going from what we do in the county, we think fifteen's usually a little short, we thought, for this type of business, we better have at least thirty-five percent. Well, as of, um, the year end, we're at a seventy percent carryover, which is actually eleven million dollar surplus. So, a, a discussion involved, and I got involved in part of that, and, you know, the first thing is, somebody sees that, and they want to just, let's just slash that down, let's take five dollars off, there's no need to have those kind of reserves. Well, yeah, we could have done that, we could do that, but then I don't like the concept where, you know, we're going to be three million short anyway. I don't want to cross, and all of a sudden, we have to start asking for it back. So, we had a pretty long discussion on this, and in the end, we decided we would reduce it to two dollars. So, our levy for next year will be thirty-five eighteen, Peggy will be getting notice on that, so that'll be a two-dollar drop, thirty-five eighteen. So, that's quite a drop from, hold me up, Peggy, what was it, forty-eight twelve? I don't like to keep saying forty-eight twelve, but it was forty-eight something.
Forty-eight something, yeah.
We're going to say forty-eight something, so we've come down from forty-eight plus, and we'll be down to thirty-five, so it's about a thirteen dollar drop. And if you divide that by forty-eight, that's probably, that's probably, uh, what is that, Rick?
Twenty-seven percent?
Yeah, it'd be about... Well, that's a good guess, I'll go with you.
It's less than a third somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just think that's really encouraging, because I go back to when I was first on this board, part of the most troubling thing was, we come in here, and we have a three hundred thousand dollar surplus.
Kind of, wow, that's good, we won't have to budget too hard on this, on mental health. The next year, we'd be five hundred thousand short, and Carl's familiar with it too, I mean, that, that and more, you know, that's not the right way to run a business when you go up and down. So, that being said, I didn't want, I didn't want to see us drop it five dollars hard, but I thought, you know, let's drop it two, and if this reoccurs next year, we can take two more, let's just go a little bit at a slow pace, so. All that being said, it was kind of a joy meeting, because everybody likes to...
There's some captains in Iowa.
Yeah, we don't get to that, but...
Those are good meetings, we want to go that way. There's some of the captains in Iowa that kill the forty-eight twelve.
Yes, they are, that's a good point. There's, we, um, and nobody brought it up, so I, I guess I forgot about it at the meeting, so I didn't bring it up, but, um, we've gotten a letter from Linda Langston from, which county is that again?
Land.
Thank you. Land County, and they thought this was moving too fast, they couldn't reach the, reached the agreements, couldn't stay on the time schedule and stuff, and they kind of had a petition like the draft, they wanted everybody to kind of... And Peggy sent it to me, I read through it, but nobody else brought it up, so I thought, well, at this point, there's no need to go into that, but... I, I think what we're, what I'm happy about is, I think we picked the right region, I guess that's the bottom line, I think we really probably are in a good region. And I think, um, Bob's doing a good job, and I think he's getting better at delegating some of these things. What I think our strength in our region is, you take someone like Kathy Erickson, and she come up with this plan here, you take, uh, Karma from, that does bookkeeping, she's strong in those areas. So, we're pulling the strong people in the county to do certain tasks for the region, and I, I think we're starting to see the benefit, I really do, so. I'm probably more optimistic than some of these other regions would be. And I think what you see, what I would wonder, is like some of these regions that are single counties or three counties, I think that's where they're having a little more trouble, because they maybe have a higher flush of issues to deal with, and, you know, they can't spread that out. We have twenty-two counties, we're spreading our, our disabilities over a longer area. So, along with that, having that money available, that also gives us a little room to do some new, new projects, to help fund some, um, different things that are getting started, like autism and different things. But the problem we're going to run into, if you start funding too many good ideas and these other counties can't, the state's going to come in, and Idaho's down, because they want equalization, we're always talking equalization. So, even when you're efficient, sometimes you have to slow down your, you know, things that you maybe want to do, so. That being said, I, I think we'll be, we're going to look good for the next couple of years, as long as something doesn't get thrown at us. And the other thing is, if we leave too much money out there, the state's going to come back and take it at some point, I think.
Did you tell us the next dates in Humboldt?
Yes, it is.
What date is it?
Well, there was some discretion about that, but Karma, seriously, she told Kathy wrong, it is, it will be, uh, January, what day did I write, did you write the twenty-sixth? It was the Wednesday, third Wednesday, fourth Wednesday? Somebody look that up, Carl, what did I tell you?
I got twenty-seventh.
That'd be the one, a Wednesday? Yeah, and it'll be, it's going to be at Westport Services, and it'll be at ten o'clock. So, I invite you all to come and see what that's all about, I think it'd be a good meeting. And I promise to keep it moving, because I'll be the chairman starting in January, so.
I mean, you...
We don't mess around, not about that, we don't mess around. We still, you got to keep Bob moving, because he likes to talk.
We still stayed with that pool of twenty-two?
Yep.
Oh, I thought they were talking about reducing that for a while, weren't you?
Hmm, not ours, I don't think.
I thought we were...
Actually, I had a couple more, wanted to start all over again, but... Well, when, yeah. See, when we were at twenty or twenty-one, there was two that were kind of hanging out there, and they kind of decided they wanted to switch. They did switch and come in, but we picked up two additional ones that were in another pool, but again, I can show that I wanted, but we, we voted on as a board to let them in, because they were kind of in our region anyway, we felt like they were kind of isolated. Emma? I think Emma was...
Emma County.
I can't remember the other one, but, so that was good news.
Yeah.
And that's all I had.
Okay. I only had one thing this week, and that was down at the LAC, and that was Dean, I think it was Tuesday morning, to finalize the, the, um, office furniture layout for the employees there, and a story came where they had given us a virtual kind of walkthrough, that you could do on the computer, and different layouts, and we come to conclusion with something we liked best after visiting the employees there. So, now we're just waiting for them to give us the final estimate cost and get that to us, and then we'll get that ordered, that's all I had.
We all did have that bid letting too.
I wasn't there for that, I guess, yeah.
Okay, and then the other thing I had, uh, on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, I had a teleconference with DCAT. We were supposed to know what, what they were going to do with the, and I mean, the trial was supposed to have been yet, in the day before, and they were supposed to see if she would charge them fraud or not. But she, she guaranteed that it's all in, the bookkeeper made some mistakes, and it wasn't her, it was in her other bookkeeper, and she don't know all the words to it. So, they've delayed the trial till the tenth of January or something like that now. Uh, but that was all I had, yeah.
Tuesday morning, I had the bid letting at ten, and, uh, five-thirty, had my UDMO meeting over to Eagle Grove with Polly Gold for listening to the board meeting over at Crestor.
Very good. I didn't have the official means, I was supposed to attend the daycare meeting, darling up Dakota City, I was out of town, but we got a lot of operations going between Humboldt and Dakota City, and I'm on a daycare operation, you've probably read about that, you can't go there for it. And I think if you're Dakota City, you're going to share some of the costs by a couple, have fundraising on top of it. The light of the plan, you probably know, we're going to try to add on to this, I, the main elementary over here across.
Will the building belong to the childcare outfit or to the school?
Well, I understand you, it belongs to the school.
And, and, but you guys will be... And, and, but you guys will be in charge of who has a childcare, yeah, they would...
So when they can...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I didn't understand that, who would actually own it, but...
Eventually, we might have the same thing happen with Ted Stark, you know, their, their house down there. That might be someday gone and take the rent from the use of this place, and it was, it definitely belonged to the school.
Yeah, yeah.
The other thing, uh, I don't know whether, just in any other meeting...
That makes more sense.
We got this pretty diamond party Saturday, right, is that right?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock. And I want anybody going to Towne City on Thursday, you can leave.
Are you gonna hit a call?
Maybe about seven fifteen.
I might be able to.
We have legislators coming up there, and we talked about a lot of these same things we talked about anywhere else. We have to elect a new district representative too up there, because the guy up there that's been chairman in the past, became secretary treasurer of the ISAC, ISAC supervisor, we'll be electing a new chairman as well as listening to the legislators on what proposal next year. I did send the letters to Crane Brink and Sexton. Crane Brink's gonna be out of town someplace, I haven't heard back from Sexton, so I don't know if he'll manage it or not. That's all I had, Peggy. Other things before we, you got anything, Peggy?
Yeah, just wanted to mention that ISAC has sent in their normal letter telling how much the lobby expense we pay to them, and then we got our new certificate, we'll put it on the board. And then I wanted to mention, we received from Bank Iowa, um, our first payments on our loans from there are coming up. Um, it's gonna be around ten thousand dollars with the two of them added together. We'll do a handwritten check today, we can do tomorrow. And according to how this was all set up, we have to pay for this on a general basis. So there won't be a budgeted item for that, sometime we'll need to amend and bring the, the minimum to that for a budget. I know it'll probably be in January, but we do a budget amendment. I just wanted to make sure.
I need, I need to be involved in amendment as soon as possible.
Okay. We will be wearing some of this.
We also have a meeting on Friday, right?
Down in Fort Dodge.
Fort Dodge, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for inviting us, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm assuming we wanna amend, uh, bridge into the budget.
Yes, yes.
And if we're gonna return with DOT, you wanna try to do a...
Yeah, we're gonna get that rolling.
Courthouse Security, it's ten o'clock.
Oh, is that tomorrow, I need to get minutes.
I'd encourage any of you can, who would be up in Towne City, we have the same discussions there, the whole group, we're having them all to ourselves. You learn about as much talking to other people as you do what's on the program. Whether it come to law enforcement, jail diversion, county roads, this kinda thing. You get a chance to come along. I'm gonna be out here at seven fifteen, I'm going, anybody wants to ride, I'll be...
What day was that?
Thursday.
And we get done at about four o'clock, so we'll be back in town by three. Usually snows that day, every year I'm going, we have...
Yeah, the weather's usually pretty crappy, cold and, cold and...
Anything else this morning?
Uh, Peggy, did you wanna get a headcount of that deal from any of us, or you...
I think I've already heard from everybody.
I see you're good on that.
Okay.
And that is, um... That's about two thirty, right?
We get to Joseph and Rudy.
Yeah, the son is gonna be there.
He's gonna go fast.
Anything else before we adjourn? My dear David, Jerry, uh, motion for Durbin.
I'll move.
Motion for Durbin.
Second.
Send my record, hold a favor, Durbin, say aye.
Aye.
Both nay, motion carried.